Let's turn our attention to the table in the back, that corner. Anyone that's not familiar with the way we do things, on that table you should find a copy of the agenda and some other supporting documents. Otherwise, let's take a moment and reflect on how lucky we are to be at Holden Beach. Another matters for just a minute, just a moment of silence. All right, thank you very much. We're on item number two and officially calling the meeting to order.
We have a public hearing.
But we do, for I'm with it tonight, honor. Public hearing, all right, on Seagull.
We have a quick slideshow, if that's okay.
All right, sure it is.
Okay, so the special assessment process, just a little timeline. We started out with a petition by the homeowners and we certified it on March 2nd, 2021. The board adopted a preliminary resolution that gives the details of the project. That was on March 16th of 2021. We held a public hearing and then the board adopted a resolution directing the project to be undertaken in May of 2021. The project, the paving part, was completed in July 2022. And then the costs were determined to be $222,630. The board adopted the resolution a couple of months ago ordering the preparation of the preliminary assessment role. That role was mailed to all the property owners for them to see. So now we're at the point to have a public hearing on the preliminary assessment role that's before you. And if you guys approve that today, what'll happen is we give it to the tax collector. In 20 days, the tax collector publishes a notice that the role has been confirmed and that assessments can be paid within 30 days of the date of the notice with no late payment. And then after that time period, it'll be assessed at an 8% per annum rate. So basically, we're at the point to hear any comments from the public. There was one comment that I put before you guys and it's on the internet for you to review from one of the homeowners, but that's the only online one I have. So that's all I have.
All right, time for the public to speak?
Yes, sir.
If you would like to be recognized to speak, if you would be kind enough to raise your hand and let me recognize you, come to the podium on my right, speak into the microphone and give us your name and address, please, ma'am.
I just want to tell you all, first of all, that the ironing board fell on my eye. So I guess that means I have a domestic problem. It's a reason not to have an ironing board. My name is Penny Nobles. My address down here is 1100 Ocean Boulevard West. I am on the corner of Seagull and Ocean Boulevard West. So I have the delight of being able to pay for my lot twice because the side of my lot is the 100-foot side and it butts up against Seagull. The front of my house is on Ocean Boulevard West. And I think I have asked you all about, a discussion about that, but I don't know whether we can have it or not. It seems to me that it's really not fair, just because of the way my lot is situated and everybody else has 50 feet out on the street and 100 feet back, that I should pay twice as much as everybody else. In the meantime, I have purchased the lot behind me, half and half with my neighbor. I got the part on Seagull. So that means I'm gonna have three lots to pay for on Seagull. So if you all feel like we just absolutely need to pay this large amount of money, I'm gonna own more of that street than anybody else. So I would like to petition you to rename the street Penny Lane. I do think that we're all a little surprised at the price that we ended up with because we were told $1,450 was the note.
Thank you. As you go back to your seat, I will tell you that I share your feeling because I'm blockade runner of the corner, I got to do the same thing that you're doing.
You told me that when we talked.
Yes, ma'am, I was wondering if you remember.
You did not make me feel better.
Anyone else want to share an experience or make a comment, raise your hand or come to the podium and give us your name and address, please?
My name is Katie Lippard. I'm at 118 Seagull. I'd just like to say, I mean, we were credited a total price of $145,014.50 per lot. And I understand the prices change, they go up, but it increased by $77,629 between the price you gave us and the price it ended up being. And I just feel like, I mean, I know at this point it's done, it's done, and we're responsible to pay it, but I just feel like we should have at least been notified and reassessed to see if we still wanted to continue with this and pay for it, once you realized how much the price was going to increase, prior to just continuing on with it and expecting us all to pay for it. Because, as Penny said, there's multiple people on this street that have more than one lot to pay for, and that's a large amount of money that we're gonna have to come up with.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you both for your comments. I'm sure the commissioners will take that into consideration. Madam Clerk, what else we gotta do?
That's it for the public hearing.
All right, unless there's an objection for some technical reason, we're going to declare the public hearing closed. And I'll try to get back on track here to follow the agenda. And welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here, and let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag which is to my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every living and just us for all.
Let's look at the agenda for consideration of approval. And may I say to you that our police chief is on official business. He's gonna be late arriving and he's asked that we move his agenda item, which is number eight, to another location on the agenda. And I would suggest, not knowing when he's gonna arrive, let's just move to 19A and we'll skip over number eight when we get to it. And I'm hoping that someone will consider a motion of approval as amended. All right, Judge Seconded. Make the motion to move. No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The agenda is approved as amended. Number five is consideration of approval of minutes, February 16 and February 21. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Okay, Second Judge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimously approved. Number six, public comments on agenda items only. As you well know, we can talk about anything you want to later on in the agenda, but currently, we're gonna consider discussion only on the items on the agenda. Does anyone want to speak to items on the agenda? Okay, we'll move along. Number seven, Mayor Holden's gonna ask Tony to come forward. There he is on the back row. Do you think this was church or something?
I wouldn't be in the building if it wasn't.
Okay, Tony, talk to us about the...
American Flood Coalition. Happy to, and I appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate your fine staff, David and Heather, for their help in arranging this for me. My name's Tony McEwen. I'm the Carolina's Director for the American Flood Coalition. I've got a number of slides. I'll breeze through them as quickly as possible. And Mayor Holden, I appreciate you allowing me to be here. As you know, you and I have worked together for a number of years.
Many years.
Yeah, very much so. I think I've been annoyance for a number of years.
Not all the time.
Not all the time, some of the time. So a little bit of background on me. I live in Wilmington. I worked for Congressman Mike McIntyre for a number of years as his Economic Development Director. After that, I was the state and federal lobbyist for the city of Wilmington. And with Mayor Holden and your staff and council and a number of other communities around the state, we worked together to beat back a proposal that would have redistributed sales tax. And it was a multi-year effort, right, Mayor?
Absolutely.
And ultimately, we won out against some very powerful interests in the legislature. And it would have cost Wilmington, as well as Holden Beach and all the beach communities in Brunswick County, up and down our coast, a lot of money. And fortunately, we worked together to make a difference on that, and that's what I'm trying to do here. And so what I'm ultimately gonna ask you all is to be, to consider becoming a member of the American Flood Coalition. And let me preface that request by saying, we are not asking for a single thing from y'all. We're not asking for any resources or for membership costs. We are a well-resourced, national nonprofit that advocates on behalf of flood resilience policy and develops flood resilience policy that can be considered at both the state and federal level. And our vested interest in having Holden Beach be a part of this is, number one, to understand what your concerns are, what your needs, and make sure those are being incorporated into state and federal asks. But also, Holden Beach is an important community in our eyes, and the more communities like Holden Beach that are a part of our coalition, the more effective we can be on behalf of our greater coalition. So with that, I'll get started here. And like I said, I've got a number of slides. I'm gonna breeze through them real quick. So first off, our mission, protecting communities that are vulnerable to flooding and sea level rise. It's a national issue that must be met with national solutions, and it's vitally important to our well-being, economic strength, and national security. Our mission, our four pillars for solutions are based around economy, communities, rebuilding, and military. First off, we're the largest and the first coalition specifically geared towards focusing on flood resilience policy. You know, we're not getting caught up in a climate change conversation. We're not coming from a particular political bend. We deal specifically with how flooding is impacting communities and how state and federal governments and local governments can make investments to improve that, to improve public safety and livability of communities. As far as our coalition, what we're made up of is we have what's called federal champions. I'll share with you some of who those are, and that's just a way for members of Congress to join our organization and comply with ethics rules. We have cities, towns, and counties, which is why I'm here before you today, elected officials, businesses. We have a number of chambers of commerce, military groups, civic group, and academic groups. And one thing I didn't mention about myself, I'm the Director of North and South Carolina, a registered lobbyist in North and South Carolina, so I work directly, and I'll tell you some of the legislation we're working on if I get a little deeper into it, but I work directly on behalf of communities on positions of the legislature. So here's our team. I'm probably the least intelligent person who works for this organization, right? These are some of the brightest minds you'll find anywhere in the country as it relates to flood policy. And most of these folks are based out of our DC office. We do have folks who work in a similar manner as I do that are based in Texas and Florida. So just a spotlight of some of our members. We have communities as small as Fairbluff in Columbus County, and as large as the city of Wilmington, Mayor of Raleigh. We have councils of government. We have folks from as far east as Nags Head, from as far west as Haywood County are members. We have a number of influential legislators that are members, including Speaker Tim Moore and Representative Charlie Miller, who I know you all know certainly. And here is an outdated snapshot of who our larger membership base is in North Carolina. We have close to 100 members now, and again, a majority of which are legislators and talented accountants. And KFIR Council of Government's a member of our organization as well. Here's our federal champions. Many of these folks you may recognize, whether you watch Fox News, MSNBC, or CNN. In North Carolina, Senator Tom Tillis, Congressman David Rousler are all federal champions of our organization, as is Congressman Greg Murk. So here's the states that we focus on. We're a national organization, but we are trying our best to build out as impressive of a state model as it relates to state flood resilience policy as possible in North Carolina, South Carolina, Texas, and Florida. So what we offer, again, we're not asking anything from y'all. We're a well-resourced organization that oftentimes are in a position to return resources to y'all, so we provide y'all best-in-class educational guides, tools for effective communication, network of leaders on flooding, which I'll share with you a little bit more on, competitive local resilience pilots. We oftentimes fund smaller grants for different communities. We're funding about eight in North Carolina right now, and usually those are in the tens of thousands of dollars as far as the grants that we provide ourselves. And then, most importantly, as far as my role, platform for advocacy in education. So again, network of local leaders. Shortly after I joined this organization, April of last year, in May, we flew about 40 mayors and county commissioners from North Carolina up to DC completely on our dime to get an immersive educational experience on flood resilience policy, but also to set up some hill visits for them. So, you know, here we are, meeting with folks like Congressman Greg Murphy. There's a retired general from the Army, Mitch Landrieu, who heads up infrastructure policy for the Biden administration. We regularly help local government officials with op-eds that run statewide and nationally. So one of the things that your staff may find of interest, something we developed with the Kresge Foundation is something called the Flood Funding Finder. When I worked for Congressman McIntyre, oftentimes was asked by local governments to help find federal funds. It's a challenging process to navigate federal funding opportunities. I never mastered it, didn't come anywhere close to it. What we did is we developed a tool specific to flood resilience, infrastructure, funding opportunities, and it's called, again, the Flood Funding Finder. And what you do is free of charge, don't have to be a member, you don't have to be anything. And it really kind of puts it in layman's terms, so our smaller communities in particular, their staff can go on and navigate the funding processes much more easily. So you go in, put in basic search terms, it will spit out exactly every funding opportunity that's either has been available, is available, or will be available, and strategies on how to best apply for it, right? Dual Disaster Handbook, something that we wrote as communities are dealing with flooding, hurricane issues, as well as COVID. Adaptation for All Guide, these are some, I believe it's the 26 most innovative approaches and practices that local governments around the country are utilizing to build flood resilience in their community. Let's skip through that real quick. So here's what y'all have been a part of and where we're at in North Carolina. North Carolina now ranks just below Florida and Louisiana for being, for the amount of investment that has been made into flood resilience policy and disaster recovery policy and resources. So in the 2021 budget, after, let me back up, after Hurricane Florence, when I was still with the city of Wilmington, Mayor Holden, you were a part of this conversation. I appreciate that. We developed something called the Eastern North Carolina Resilience and Recovery Alliance, trying to kind of be a squeaky wheel as a region to develop, sorry, to kind of be the squeaky wheel on behalf of our communities as we recover from Hurricane Florence. Ultimately, in 2021, through a listening tour that we did across eastern North Carolina, we came up with six priorities. Five of those six priorities were introduced by the House Majority Leader in the North Carolina General Assembly, and ultimately were put into the budget. So five of our six priorities, in direct response to our request, $357 million was appropriated. That money is flowing right now, so we're actively advocating for additional policy and resources, what have you, but we're also trying to make sure that the money that has been invested so far on behalf of our acts is being implemented effectively, equitably, efficiently, what have you. And so we're actively monitoring that. But so here's just some examples of what's been funded. Fund and Actionable Flood Resilience Blueprint. So folks who are a lot smarter than I do who work in this space will tell you this is kind of the bow that ties everything together. So this is a $24 million project that's occurring right now. It's being led by the Department of Environmental Quality here in North Carolina. And what that does is it really maps out the state circulatory system and provides a roadmap for how to make investments for the state and local governments to make investments going forward. Ensure Resilient Critical Transportation Infrastructure. First-of-its-kind $15 million grant program that specifically invests in transportation-specific needs related to flood resilience. I'll tell you a bit more about that in a minute. Stream Management, Riverine Clearing Funding, around $100 million for that, and then Capacity and Technical Assistance. So folks that are expert, we've got $6 million to put them in council of government offices around the state. So what they can do is help local governments find projects to apply for federal and state funds for, help them make those applications, help them administer those funds on the back end. Those funds are coming online through our COGS as we speak. And then fund grants for innovative pilot projects. So here's what is kind of timely that I'd like to briefly discuss with you all, because I'd like to have your help on this. So as I said, first-of-its-kind $15 million grant program for transportation-specific flood resilience projects. This is something, whether you're all the way in the west in Haywood County in the Asheville area, or if you're in Nags Head or Holden Beach, Wilmington, what have you, this is something that I hear all across the state, is people who have nuisance flooding issues or more significant than that on their roadways in their communities, or people that have needs to study resilient route strategies, right? So first-of-its-kind grants, these have already been doled out. These are the 19 grants that were funded with $15 million. We introduced last week and did some media in Raleigh, and we introduced, these were not reoccurring funding, so we, for one more time, are asking for a $50 million grant program. Your Representative Charlie Miller is a lead sponsor on this bill. We have folks from leadership in the western part of the state and in the eastern part of the state that are co-sponsoring this. So it's House Bill 313 and Senate Bill 300. And so that's something that if we can get this across the finish line, I'm very confident that y'all could find projects in their community that can benefit from these dollars. And then as well, if you're going for federal dollars, part of how we expanded the eligible use is that you can use this for your local matches, you're going for federal dollars that relate to flood resilience projects. So again, I'll remind you, the historic level of funding from the federal government, once in a multi-generational opportunity, and we want to make sure our communities in North Carolina are taking advantage of that. And I think I turned it off, but I think that's all I have, and I can shut up anyway. So do you have any questions for me? That's, sorry if I went on a little too long.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? With our local representative being an integral part of this, as much as we work together on so many other things, it kind of lends itself to a blessing coming from him. So I would encourage the commissioners to consider this strongly. Mr. Hewitt or Kristi, do either one of you have anything that you'd like to add in the work that you're doing writing for these grants?
I'd like to say that the, this is the first background information that I've received on it, but I like what I'm, I like what I hear, especially the pending legislation that seems to be coming forward and some of the projects on that list that have already come forward. I know that the Public Works Director is here. We're looking at getting a stormwater plan together, and one of the buzzwords off there were innovative pilot projects, especially here at Holden Beach. We've been doing, doing some neat things for a while and have managed to craft some, and put together some projects that heretofore hadn't been done before, so it's really piqued my interest, and I can see a lot of benefit by throwing in with these folks.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2302 and become a member.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any more discussion? Anybody, any commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Madam Clerk, it's unanimously passed. We're gonna skip over number eight and go to number nine on the agenda, inspections. Mr. Evans? Thank you, Tony, for your presentation.
Looking to call on him, I feel a little underdressed. 35's got the numbers on it. We had, actually, things picked up this month. You can see the dollar amounts a little bit higher than it normally was last time, and you can actually see that the construction cost value for that, when taxes went up roughly around $2 million. Active new home permits were 47. Other active permits were 295. That's the ones that we're putting our hands on every day. Permits issued, over 30,000. You'll notice that number's going up, that's 21. The substantial improvements, over 100,000, four of those permits issued, that's been issued, that are waiting to be picked up is 12, and that's a total of 344 that we're working with. Permits in review are four. Permits submitted, incomplete, were 11. Those get turned back. CAMA review currently is 11, and zoning permits issued were 18, which means that we've got 18 zoning permits, that means there's building permits coming back with those. CAMA permits issued were nine, and if you'll notice, there were no CAMA violations. And then we actually serviced 88 permits during the month for inspections, which means we were rotating on those permits. If there's any questions, we're glad to answer them, but that pretty much shows that we are very busy over there.
Team, have you seen any reduction in...
Yeah, typically, I was telling Daniel today, because we're having a discussion, and typically what happens is, is that if, here at Holden Beach, even back when it was real bad for everybody else, construction stayed stable because as homes fell off, new home construction fell off, the, over the substantial improvements and the jobs over 30,000 increased because people started remodeling and repairing, you know what I mean, instead of tearing down, rebuilding, or building. So they were either buying to upfit, you know what I mean, or getting them ready for season and spending more money on them than turning them over. So we, you can actually track it as it goes up and down. It's like, we're either doing a, we're gonna do less than a lot of new homes, we're gonna be doing more remodels, over 30,000, and more substantial improvements. It just seems to be a trend, and you just keep following. So we stay pretty stable, pretty steady, yes. So it's, and what I'm saying is, if homes start to fall off, it's like the other work picks up. It seems to be that. All right, I guess there's another item after this.
Yes.
That's the CRS report.
Yes, sir.
Do you want me to go directly into that?
Without objection from commissioners, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so the, I attended the CAMA meeting, or the Coastal Resource Commission meeting, and there was some stuff that probably needs to be reported on. You have to understand, we're in that inlet hazard area situation, and so there's some things going on with there. Number one thing that was going on was, was that they were recognizing that there was a, they used to use the erosion rates that had joined the inlets, and now they've come up with new erosion rates, and so they designated those erosion rates as being used in the graduated setbacks for ocean erodible areas. So some of them next to the ocean may have been two to four, well, they, when the inlet hazard areas came on board, they could go as high as 17 or 18, and that is a multiplying factor that we use with a set number of vegetation line to determine where your house is, what can be done to it, how it can be built. So they designated that as being identifiable. That was one thing they did. Another thing that they did, they removed the 1,000-square-foot print limitation in ocean erodible areas, which is what some of those things could put you into, and now they allow a total floor area of 2,000 square feet. There's a definition for total floor area, but it basically means all heated square footage and anything that's enclosed, that's, that's got a roof over it. In some areas of the beach, that actually helps us. On the east end, you now can have a 2,000-square-foot footprint, where you used to only have a 1,000 square foot with a 2,000-square-foot limit. They took that 1,000-square-foot footprint out, and now it's a 2,000-square-foot total area. Okay? So then, number three, they removed some language and designated a, or some confusing language, and designated a 5,000-foot limit on new construction in the inlet hazard area. It used to be, in other words, if it's new construction now, it's limited to 5,000. It used to have some language in there about residential and non-residential. They took out the residential and the other stuff, and now it's just new construction is limited to 5,000 square foot if you're in the inlet hazard area. DCM is now currently updating the physical analysis to be presented at the commissioners' April 26th and 27th meeting after another public hearing. And that physical analysis about, is the inlet hazard area stuff. And I'm gonna get some more of that. There was, there's a minimum growing season for vegetation to be established now. It takes two seasons, or 16 to 18... It takes two seasons, or eighteen to sixteen, sixteen to eighteen months. That mean, we used to, we had to, when we went out to establish the vegetation, we had to determine whether it was established. Well, now they're saying that if it hasn't gone through two growing seasons, or been there for sixteen to eighteen months, it can't be considered as stable vegetation until that point. And that's going for a public hearing at the new, at the next CRC meeting. Beach mats, beach mats, there'll be a comment, a public comment on March twentieth, they'll end on March twentieth, and they'll go into effect in June. And basically what that means is, is that right now, we can go out to the vegetation line, we can go a little bit further than that. If we want to go out on the beach, like for ADA compliance or stuff like that, then we have to get, we have to get the Resource Commission, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, determine whether the proposed designate, design or installation will have an adverse impact on sea turtles or other threatened or endangered species. And we can't, we, we've been trying now for months to get someone to tell us what that is, or give us some guideline for that, and I know Ocean Isle's struggling with it too. They were trying to clear up some designation with that, but I think that the point of contact is through CAMA to get to them with this, for these things. But like I said, March twentieth, this also allows for private homeowners to go out to the vegetation line, they can't go any further if it gets approved. So can't be more than six feet long, wide, and they still have to meet the same requirements as the other walkways or beach accesses. And I think, so that covered the growing season. I think that pretty much covers all of it. They, let's see. Didn't miss anything. So that was, that's what happened at the CRS.
Tim, you want to talk about the hay bales for sand fence that is experimenting over at Ocean Isle, I think?
Yeah, I, I had some notes on that, but basically what it amounts to is, is that they applied for variance, they had placed it, put them in place, thinking that they had a proper permit, they didn't, so they applied for variance. The variance was approved with conditions, and one of the conditions was, they had to get that approval from the Wildlife Commission and U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and it had to be monitored for a certain period of time, but they would be permitted under those conditions, and they granted them a variance for that.
Was that hay and, and/or straw, or is it just hay?
I think it was just hay.
It was hay bales. They talked about straw, but there was an acidic
Yeah.
... concern over what goes in, and while, while I think it's probably a great idea, we want to watch it.
I think that's what, the, the outcome was, was that they wanted, they, they didn't mind them doing it as long as they followed the rules and guidelines that they had put in place, and they kind of skipped it, but they thought that they had the okay. So they're telling them to get a variance, but they're telling them to get a variance with conditions, and the condition is that it has to be monitored. One of those conditions, it has to be monitored. And I think they gave, come up with that condition, but I'm not sure if they did that. The other thing that got discussed was enforceable rules inside our CAMA land use plan, and there's some criteria on that, and we're looking at that, but there, we got, CAMA is basically saying, at first they were saying they were going to enforce the rules inside the CAMA land use plan, and then they decided that they would allow the local jurisdictions to outline what rules that, and they would have a guidance on that of what they would enforce if they were doing permits inside our town, under the CAMA land use. And so that was, that was discussed as well.
Tim, did they have any, like a test area that they established to, to do this?
The hay?
Do the hay?
The hay bales are already on the ground over there at Ocean Isle, that's what happened. So they're basically using that as a, they want them monitored and
For the sand fence.
Yeah, see, I think that the conclusion was, was that they weren't really allowed yet, and so they were thinking they may be, so in order for them to become, you'd have to get a variance now to put them in, just like they did, and you'd have to follow those same guidelines. But they're, but they're right now monitoring that. I would be, I would wait and see what the outcome of that is.
Well, the, the thing that I was concerned about when I, I read some on that, and the, they're basically looking for the infestation of insects and stuff, but then the hay, hay bales take to cause some detrimental problems with the turtles, as well as they're making them remove the strings. And if you remove the strings, I've baled enough hay that with the winds that we have at times, that stuff is not going to be very stable. I think it's a good idea to, to let's wait and see. But we've tried Christmas trees, that worked relatively well. In fact, I brought mine down, it's in front of mine now, and it's just about covered up, it's doing really well. But this, again, with the hay bales, I, like you said, the jury's still out on that, as to, what if we have a king tide and it floats them all up in one big pile in front of somebody's house?
My concern is, is that we're seeing this, we're seeing and hearing this criteria with U.S. Fish and Wildlife, but we can't get any, we can't pin it down as to exactly what it is that they're looking for and what we need to provide. And so we, I've got two emails in right now, but it, that was my understanding, that was the problem they were having at Ocean Isle as well. So, in other words.
But it's one of those that our sand fences worked really well for years.
I, I, I'm not sure, I don't know what to say about hay bales, I really don't know. I don't, I do think that, I think we're fortunate that there's some on the ground already that we could watch and see. I do think that, I mean, we can monitor them just like they do, we can go over and look at them, see exactly how well they're doing. But you can guarantee that if they're doing well, everybody's gonna know about it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Tim, you were talking about the inlet hazard area and a couple of, a couple of things there, have, did they come to, is, we call it the methodology they use to, to, to set the inlet hazard area. Have they done anything to reduce the size of them, are they still?
No, they're still the same size.
Again, it's, Tim, I've been here sixty years, that, where are they getting the data from? It doesn't seem like it needs to go all the way to
You're talking, you're talking to the guy that stood before the CRC and called it voodoo. You're asking me where it came from. I, we, the methodology is strange at best, and I can't, I cannot imagine, we, we know what they say they used, but when you have, it's written in one of these documents I have here, based on their other stuff, for the inlet hazard area, when you have, when you have a positive rate of buildup
Yeah.
And you call that a minus two, and you've got a, a, a negative rate of loss of sand that equates to negative two, and you call that negative two, and that's the science you use throughout all of it, I don't know how you call that, that's not science anywhere I've ever been. That looks more like some of those sophisticated, wild-ass guesses I got. I mean, I'm just saying, I probably shouldn't say it that way, but that's the way it seems to me. I got, we got an email today, I responded to it. The, the person that's in charge of the program, he responded to one of the folks that we, that we notified, telling her that she was in the inlet hazard area, but she wasn't affected, because she, she didn't have an erosion rate change. Well, if your erosion rate didn't change and you're in the new affected area, then what is that? That, is that, you just designated it for what reason? And why did it get designated that, because there's no effect?
It is island-wide, it goes from one side of the island to the other.
No, it extended. We got a, a big extension on the west end, and it, it went from about where the gate's at, to, down to one thousand and three. It went down a ways.
It was not, it was not down to the gate originally, it was not down to the gate all the way. Second row, my house was right about where it ended, and in the front, in the front row, it was twelve-something-ish.
You're, you're right. It, it was further back towards your house, it was, that's right.
It was well into the west end subdivision, and now all of the front row, and the majority of the second row in west end, and then all the way down to, was it nine?
It's three-hundred-and-ninety, it was three-hundred-and-forty-four affected.
But now it's down to the nine-hundred and something, or on the front row?
It's down, yeah, it's, it's down all the way to sailfish.
Yeah.
Stops right before the sailfish
Yeah.
On Ocean Island. But it was, it was quite an extension. We, we questioned it from day one, I've gone to several meetings, I, I, I tried to be very articulate with our concerns. I know that David sent letters, we've done, we've done about all we can do, and I stood before y'all in a meeting a year ago or so and told y'all that we've pretty much done all we could, it felt like we needed to take action on a political level, I think if I remember that as well, I think it was, but I, but I did that, because, and now we're, I don't know, we're in the, we're at the end of this game and how far it's going to go. But the, to, to tell someone that you've designated them in the inlet hazard area, I mean, the mayor can, can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure you got to disclose that when you go to sell the property, you give it a, you stigmatize it. I, I'm just a country boy, but if I come over here and buy a piece of property, I'm going on a reduction if it's in the inlet hazard area, I want to negotiate, because it sounds to me like it's in a bad spot. I don't, I, I just don't think that the expansion was warranted, I don't think that, in my opinion, they were asked to look at the inlet hazard areas, the inlet hazard areas did not need to be changed, but we all know that if you ask a particular group, staff or anyone else, or, or get a group together to take a look at something, they feel as though they need to have some kind of outcome. And I said from day one, this appears to be a self-fulfilling prophecy that we, if we leave it where it's at
We hadn't done anything.
We hadn't done anything. I, I felt like since day one, that, that's what it was.
But what would our, what would Holden Beach's next steps be? Or is there anything that we can do to mitigate any of this?
Well, they changed these rules, these rules that they just, that I just told you they're changing, they're changing because they now recognize the fact that they changed when they, in order to, to do the inlet hazard areas the way they did, they changed the erosion rates in the inlet hazard. So they went from what used to mirror the front, which might have been a four or three, to a seventeen. Now, you say that doesn't affect me now because we're so far back because of our own. See, we do more to protect it, their structures than the inlet hazard area does. The fact that we've required everybody to build it, where the town has a frontal dome, has kept everybody from being affected because they're too far back from the setbacks. But now you got to remember, if you have a decent-sized storm, and you've never, you've never had a problem before, but we have a decent-sized storm, they've expanded it into areas that if we have erosion, that, that could now drastically affect those properties. Because now they're in one, they're in an inlet hazard area, and they're going to be inside that setback.
What agency does this, Tim?
Yeah, I just told you, it's the Coastal Resource Commission, it's been going on for, since 2019. It, it died for a long time, and they had to come back for a second round of hearings because of COVID. But we didn't stop. I went with my mask, I stood before them. We, we never, we, we constantly were there, telling them that we didn't approve of it, we didn't want it. But we, we put a hundred people in this room. Was anybody here?
Yes.
Yeah, we put a hundred people in this room, and a hundred people gave them comments, and some of them wrote letters. They ignored them.
We've been engaged in this, in this effort for over three years now, at varying levels of, of, of protest.
Yeah.
And the most recent, of course, was the letter that we sent out to the, the people that are going to be, that are currently in the inlet hazard area, and to include the expanded areas, and let them know as a way of encouraging them to become educated on some of these potential impacts, and to go ahead and, and contact the Division of Coastal Management directly. To, to your question on, on what are we going to do, we've actually requested of the General Assembly to actually intercede and prohibit any implementation on the, the inlet hazard area rules.
Yeah, we, we fought it, we, we fought it a long time, and we've had some really good points. The last point that I had when I spoke before then, has been a year since then, was that the only thing they would ever tell us when we questioned the science was that they were going to review it again in five years. Well, at that point, it was already, the science was already three years old, and that was the only, only thing we got. I wrote a letter, or I didn't write, I wrote a, a statement and got it before them and asked specific questions while I was making the statements, and one of which was, they keep telling us there's a five-year review when we keep questioning the science. Well, I asked them what that process was, and what the outcome of that process was, if it was favorable to the town. I got no answer. So now the question is, is now we're four years into the, it's already four-year-old data, why implement it now? Why not wait another year to see if you're accurate? Before you implement it? And I think that question came up at Ocean Isle, but we had already been questioning it over a year ago, the, the, the age of the data compared to when they were going to review.
Do we have any representation at the?
We actually had a person from the beach that sat on that board. What was his name? Abram, was it Abram?
Craig.
Yeah.
Locally here, the representative locally on the Coastal Resources Commission, Phil Norris, is on that Coastal Resources Commission as a sitting member. And Ocean Isle actually has a seated member on the CRC. He was a new appointee. He took Craig's place, I believe, is what it amounted to.
Pete Diggan.
When do we expect to hear something from the General Assembly? Or how will we hear something from the General Assembly?
Charlie Miller will be communicating with me and you.
Okay.
Do you guys have any more questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tim.
Police chief, we're police chief, we got you at nineteen to eight on the agenda.
I apologize for my
I'll push through.
Number ten. Madam Clerk, you want to talk with us about Seago?
Yes, I won't read my whole memo since I did the public hearing for you guys, but basically what's before you is the preliminary assessment rule, which represents half of the cost of the project, as was directed during the resolution throughout the process. So the next step would be, if you're interested in moving forward with collecting the money, you just have to adopt the resolution that's in the packet, and it'll be given to the tax collector for collection.
Commissioners, how do you feel?
Well, I think it's worthwhile to actually read the one comment that was posted on the internet, that's from Ed Cabanas at 123 Seago, because he makes the point that being a retired senior, living on a fixed income, living within a budget, I've done the figures and find I can pay the assessment in six payments and stay on budget, I prefer to do this. He goes on with a little bit more, but, but basically is asking for more time to make full payment without incurring interest charges. For a project that took somewhat longer to accomplish and cost quite a bit more than originally quoted, and he acknowledges, all quite expected on my part, the extra hundred and twenty days seems quite a reasonable time for the town to float the debt. Says, well, reasonable to me. I'd like to understand if there is something in law that thirty days is a mandate.
It's prescriptive. By law, it's prescription, it doesn't provide for extending that period.
It would have had to been done during the original resolution that the board adopted, which we, we've never done it that way, so anything past the thirty days, you would have to charge the insurance fee.
And what interest rate?
It's eight percent per year.
There's no way to roll that back? Is that what you're saying?
No, there's not.
I, I'll just say something, just a comment. I live on Seago Street, these are all my family, so to speak, and we sent them, in their defense, we did send them a proposal with one number. Inflation is on a tear, and fuel prices and everything, and that's the difference, and I don't think any of us were expecting the cost to rise as much. And from my heart, I really feel bad about this, but it looks like there's no way out of it, but of it. But in the future, and there's some unpaid streets and undeveloped property on the island, and it is a big, big expense to choke for people. At one time, I, I would hope that in the future, maybe we could consider some different terms. I do think, had the people, I don't remember the vote, but I think it was only a couple votes that, that wanted to pave and didn't want to pave, it was really close. I think if they'd have known the price, I, I think we'd still be on a dirt road down there. And I don't, I don't like doing this. I mean, we have to push it through, but I just really, from the bottom of my heart, I must apologize for it. It certainly wasn't our intention.
I've got to agree with Brian. It also cost the town of Holden Beach more to get it done. That was an unexpected expenditure for us, too. And I've, I've been assessed in the past, and it's, it's painful. But we've, we've, the road has been paved. Usually paving the road helps with the property value. And I'm not saying it's tremendous, but it does help by having a paved access to your homes. So I guess I've got to make a motion to approve Resolution 23-4 to start levying the assessments on the Seagull property.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion, commissioners, anybody? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say no. She unanimously approved. We're on number 11. Mr. Hewitt, the pier project.
Yes, sir. We received the, the pier design proposal from Chip Hemingway, but he is not here tonight, and I am not equipped to answer the questions that you may have for consideration of the
You think he might arrive later, or?
I don't know. I haven't, I haven't had any communication from him.
I would suggest let's skip over this.
Absolutely.
He might be on flat tire somewhere, hadn't he, Judge?
Know what a flat tire is, yes, sir.
All right, we'll come back to that in a few minutes. Let's turn the page to number 12. Mr. Hewitt, you're still up. Pinnacle Architecture.
Yes, sir. They provided a design proposal for Block Q as requested by the board. Execution of the proposal can be accommodated from within existing funds. And Mr. Baker is here tonight to answer any questions that, that the board may have. And this is a revision to the contract that the board initially adopted, adopted. Basically, he's omitted the design fee portion that's associated with the road closure because the town had actually already gone ahead and done the, the survey and the preliminaries for that. And then the Phase 3 construction and bid documents on the, in the original proposal, those were to be determined. So then, the, the total contract now has been fleshed out.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Pinnacle to move forward with the Block Q project.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Discussion, anyone? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. She unanimously approved. Thank you for your hard work, sir. Number 13, Mr. McRaney.
So at the February meeting, the board selected Martin Starnes and Associates for the audit firm to complete the audit for this year. The proposed contract is included for the board's review. The fees for the contract are $35,475, and the recommended motion is to approve the contract to audit accounts between the town and Martin Starnes.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Brian, you made it, who was the second judge? Discussion, anyone? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, it's four to one with Ms. Pat objecting. All right, thank you very much. Number 14, Ms. Ferguson, going to talk with us about McGill Sailfish Drive.
Good evening, everyone. Last month at the meeting, the staff supplied you with our recommendation for the consultant for Sailfish Park. That was McGill and Associates. The contract was provided to the town manager. It is slightly over what was in the budget. However, that can be accommodated through existing resources in the professional services line. So the total for the contract is $34,680.
Are you hopeful of a motion, ma'am?
I am hopeful of a motion.
Is there a motion from the commissioners? Anybody? Judge, so moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Mr. Mayor pro tem, second. Discussion, anyone?
Christie, this is, as we move forward, we're going to try to explore the possibility of getting some grants to assist with this.
We will always explore that idea, but I want the board to keep in mind that with any grant, what you should do is, one, you have a project that you have in mind. Two, it's something the community wants and needs that you would fund anyway, whether you're getting a grant or not. And then, three, if a funding source is available, you try to match it. But you don't ever go into it looking like we're going for a project because there might be a grant that we'll pay for.
No, please. We've got to have a plan.
Yep.
Okay.
Do we, do we have a wetland delineation down there?
That's what's costing the extra money. It was on.
I mean, already, I can't imagine. We don't.
Isn't, isn't that the place that I got in trouble for bush hogging in the marsh? Yeah, we.
You don't have one?
There's, there's no, no, there's no way it land delineation down there.
There's one.
David was legal to know it, right?
Yeah.
Try to help you out a little bit, Mr. Christie.
I wouldn't bush hog in marsh grass.
All right. You ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. She unanimously passed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I've been working two avenues here while I was doing this. I was also trying to follow up about the pier and Mr. Hemingway via text. And he, he was a little crossed up on the meeting tonight, but he is available to call in. So it's the board's pleasure on if you want me to continue down the agenda, or if you want to speak to him by call in, or if you want to put him to a different meeting.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Don't want to put it off, Christie, if we see if you can get him online with us.
What's the feeling of the board?
I just got the information. I mean, I'd like to look at it, but.
Ms. Pat?
Has the town evaluated it deeply? Has the town evaluated it deeply? Because when we got the message from Heather, when she did forward it all to us at the last minute, she said at that point the town had not evaluated it yet.
Is the consensus of the board come the next meeting?
Sounds good, ma'am.
Is that what, what you're saying?
I, I would like for him to be here. I mean, I, it, it's a big project.
They're going to put the project off.
It was just a, a measure from my packet for some reason. I, I didn't have the information, but.
Okay, so.
Consensus of the board.
I'm just one commissioner, so if you guys got it and you feel good about it. But I agree with Brian, I think, I, I face to face, it's just a little bit.
We'll put him on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, I'm going to let him know real quick so that he doesn't stand by.
Madam Clerk, you got that?
Yes, sir.
When is the next meeting, Heather?
April 20th, April.
Do we not have a special meeting before that?
No. The, a board meeting is the 18th, and then we have a special meeting on the 20th. So the board meeting, the regular meeting's first.
When?
18th.
Go ahead, Ms. Ferguson.
All right. So the next item in your packet regards the town-owned property at 796. Last month, you saw in your packet, we had a list of expenses. We had bids to come back in that were missing, a couple of items that the board asked that we follow up on. The revenue side, there was no action. So we did secure those items from Mr. Robbins. His bid for repairs is $48,440. He can begin 45 days after award of contract and when permits are issued, and he estimates the work would be accomplished in six weeks. And in order, since it's a water asset, in order for that to occur, there's a budget amendment attached to your memo, and it has those expenses coming from the water fund with a fund balancing increase. If the board would like to move forward, you would need a motion to move forward with accepting the bid and for the acceptance of the budget amendment.
Christie, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract for the 796 repairs, and also the ordinance change 23-5, meaning 22-14, to direct the funds.
Madam Clerk, do you understand the motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, discussion. We're not even second.
I second that one.
Second for discussion purposes. Anybody want to discuss it?
I do. Tim, are you, I know you looked at the bids, and I know you looked at the, you understand. So.
Mr. Evans, his function is not to review contracts or the, the bid proposals. Tim did, was an integral part of the statement of work development.
I guess, I just want to make sure the scope works was satisfactory with.
Oh, it's what needs to be done there?
Yes.
Yeah, it's good for work. Is this, is this in projection for repairing the house to bring it up so it's more appealing, or are we still on the board for renting it?
So it's 87 days is what he, I don't think it's going to take 45 days to get a permit, but I hope not. But that would kick it into the rental season, so.
It's moved.
We need to.
It's three months.
We need to move it along a little faster if we're planning on renting it, but.
If, if he's 45 days after award of the contract, and if the award of the contract was immediately, and then another six weeks, you're talking about three months. That puts us in mid-June. That's kind of already well into the season.
June 15th's a strong week, so let's pray for the best.
But, but these repairs aren't all that's needed to get the house up to ready for rental, is that correct?
That was not renter-ready. That is for the cosmetic repair side. Last month in your packet, there was a list of things that different agencies listed that would need to occur. Some of those had price tags beside them, and some of them didn't, depended on the agency that you were choosing.
So the $48,440 is for cosmetic only?
The, yes, it was in the scope.
It's basically, it's basically to bring, right now, it's a residential structure, and it's basically to bring that structure into compliance with our own ordinance as it applies to minimum, to the minimum standards for that type of structure.
It's an eyesore.
I, I, well, I agree with you, it's an eyesore, but I, I think we need the future plan for what we're going to do to make sure that this scope of this money being spent is going to coincide with what we're going to do with the house.
Well, certainly. Paint and stuff like that would coincide with.
Like you just said.
Well, that's, that's the question I was asking. Is this bringing it up to code, or is, are we still trying to pursue? I'm just clarifying, are we still trying to pursue rental? Are we doing this cosmetic purposes to continue with our plan to go forward with what we're doing with the house?
We haven't decided that yet.
Well, we need to do that.
So you got a second? Yep. Any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Four to one with the doctor in opposition. All right.
For the second part of this memo, at the last board meeting, you guys briefly talked, well, never mind, you just covered that because you're not going to get into this rental season. So for moving to the Kama Development Grant, last month I talked to you about how you would like to pursue the pre-application process. You chose that you wanted to pursue the bathroom component with the parking that was associated with the bathroom. And then there were some sidewalk and landscaping that we included with that, so that area would potentially be user-friendly and ready. The total for that grant project that we are applying for is $560,000. Our match would be $140,000. We'd be, would be asking for $420,000 from the state. This is a pre-application process. We would be told between now and probably June timeframe whether we should submit a final in August. Last year, when we were doing a final, we chose to do a public hearing, so we would be told if we've been moved into a second round. What would be needed tonight, if you want to pursue this, is to direct the town manager to submit the pre-application.
The pre-application.
I, I do have a question first.
Okay.
Is it possible for us to limit the land to the parcels that are going to actually be part and parcel of the restroom and the associated parking area, rather than having all of Block Q attached? Because you said there's a 25-year, the typical 25-year commitment, and while the restrooms and the restroom parking area are definitely long-term, who knows what parking is going to be? And I question whether or not we have to tie up all of it for 25 years, or if it's better to just designate the actual parcels that the restroom and the affiliated parking are going to go on.
And I cannot answer that for you tonight. I know that with part of you could, but I don't know if with this grant you can. I can find out, but I can't answer it for you tonight.
I, I think, I think it, it was having that answered before we go forward.
That would at least, for, that would at least take half a Block Q out of this, the picture, like, that would be tied up for 25 years, just, just glancing at it.
Um, the only thing that it may require is you might, might have to have a special meeting in April, based on the timeline of when it would be due.
That's right. I think the development of Block Q, wasn't it decided that we were going to kind of separate that anyway and go ahead and Phase 1 would be the, the boat parking, and then Phase 2 would be the restroom area?
That's, that's correct. And what I'm thinking is that, that, that y'all can go ahead and give us the, go ahead, this is a pre-application.
Right.
And, and go ahead and get our, our name in line to do it, then bring back the answer on whether it has, all the property has to be sublimated to that process, or can it just be locate, the properties that the restroom would be located on? One of the, one of the things that's going to play in here, we're going to need a little bit of more information, because we can approximate the location on that site. We're going to need some dimensions as to exactly where it will be in order to figure out if it can be just tied to a few of the lots, exactly where those would be. But I, I'd suggest to the board that we move ahead with the pre-application and then find out as part of that, an answer, and bring it back to you, if, if, and then let the board make a decision on, on what, how they would want to go through with the formal application process.
Would you like to withdraw the motion and make another motion?
I'd like to make a motion to submit the pre-application.
You've got enough, you've got a motion on the floor, darling. Madam Clerk?
No.
We don't have one. I apologize. I thought we did. Okay. Go ahead, sir. I'd kiss you, I'm so sorry.
Don't you do. I'm just going to direct the town manager to submit the pre-application for the Block Q restroom area.
Second. All right, motion, second. Now discuss that. Is there any discussion?
Well, again, I think with what we, the, the plan that we had for Block Q was to, to move forward with the parking areas. to move forward with the parking areas separate from the bathroom anyway, so...
But that's, that's not what this is about. It's about committing the land for the twenty-five years. Is there a way to put it in that it is a question or it's left open for how much of the lot is actually going to be committed in the pre-application?
Oh, we're going to find that out and bring it back to you. We're going to find that out and bring it back to the board. There's no, I, I mean, we would bring it back to the board and if we, if we get an answer that says the whole thing has to be subrogated to, to the twenty-five-year constraint and, and then y'all may say that's okay with us or no, we don't want to do that. So, but, but it, I think the important thing here is that this is the year that there's been a whole bunch of money given to the Division of Coastal Management and that we, that you need to, we're already in line for this grant. This is a question that we don't know the answer to. We don't want to lose our place in line. We don't have to make a decision on doing the formal grant, the real grant, at this point in time. This is just a preliminary.
It's a baby step.
Okay.
Everybody understand where we are? Ready to vote? We do have a motion and a second, right?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Ananously approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Number seventeen, Mr. Clemmons. Public Works.
This memo is in reference to increasing the water tap fees. Staff has proposed an increase of our current water tap fees. This amendment is necessary to cover manpower, equipment, and increase in costing materials associated with this service. Proposal rate and attachment will bring town's fees in line with Brunswick County. If the board would like to move forward, we suggest new rates. Motion to approve the solution. Twenty-three oh five.
Anybody want to make that motion?
And, excuse me. I had a question earlier. Somebody was thinking that the way they looked on page eighty-five, they thought we were lowering the tap fee for wives, but that's not correct. It's basically just sloppy housekeeping on my behalf. If you look at Attachment Two, it's basically got that fee scheduled cleaned up like it needs.
Motion to approve twenty-three oh five.
I'll second that.
Discussion, anybody?
I, I just, this is going to then immediately go into effect tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am. That's what I'd like to see.
Okay.
We've actually been on, I don't think we've had an increase since about two thousand fifteen or something.
No, no, no. I, I understand.
Yeah, I got you.
It is going to affect tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay.
Hope so.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
I got one more.
All right.
I got one more thing on that. Be the next line, the actual DM's fee schedule for inspection department. And I've got something I'd like to add to that fee schedule that kind of got in my head and I didn't get the information to him in time. And that's the positive on sidewalks for new construction. Right now, we're collecting five hundred dollars, which is basically nothing. And I did have a situation in the past year where a contractor elected not fix the sidewalk and went to town and fixed sidewalks because it's cheaper for him to keep his five hundred dollars. So, I propose we increase that rate to two thousand dollars. And we're talking about fifty-foot of sidewalk in most cases in front of houses that could be damaged. And, you know, as long as I've been here, I was kind of amazed. I've never had nobody in that loophole, so about the people out there to do that.
How wide is the sidewalk, Chris?
Uh, six feet wide. And you figure concrete's about a hundred fifty bucks a yard, labor and all that, it don't take long. Five hundred dollars, what do you want to get in trouble on a side this day in time? You know, somebody doing like this shit, you know, you ain't going to have no problems. But I'd say that I was really floored that the contractor would take that approach here. He'd rather, you know, keep, let you keep five hundred dollars and you could do the work because that's basically what it boiled down to.
Who would do the work if the contractor didn't do it?
Well, I have done it in the past ourselves, Brian, and it really depends on what kind of workload I'm faced with. If it's, you know, if we're small enough, you know, I'd have to get outside sources. Last contract, or concrete, I paid anybody to do the prices, including the roof.
So, I just, I am a contractor. I just figured it costs about eleven hundred dollars to do that, but however, I, I understand your point. So, the contractor should be responsible and fix it itself and if they don't, they should, I don't have a problem with two thousand.
Yeah.
Because they're just pushing it off on somebody else. But I've, I've had a replacement in the past, but Ocean Isles, a thousand in comparison, but you're right, if, if they're not going to fix it, if they don't have any consequences, so I'm, I'm all right with that.
Well, most people in good business practice, you know, you won't pay out that much if you're covering over me. I was a real red bull guy.
You also got to remember too, that in a lot of the sidewalk locations, the sidewalk is actually a protective measure for the, measure for the vacuum sewer line. So, you know, and that vacuum sewer line isn't too far down in the ground and there may be some complications involved with doing damage to that sidewalk.
Yeah. I've had a few contractors over here that actually went above and beyond and when they left, the sidewalk in front of the place was better than it was before they went. My hat's off to them, they know who they are. And people didn't pay nothing, but they are too.
Who, who inspects that, Tim, if a contractor?
If you have a five foot permit, if it's got a sidewalk, we go out and take pictures of the sidewalk. And then before we issue the CO, Ron, 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 or Karen, or myself, we, we look at if it's a problem, then we contact.
Now, that sidewalk, when it was first poured, was three and a half inches and then I think it went to four and then I think it went to five. Is that still five or is it six now?
You know, we probably put it back the way it was. So, it depends, because I've seen all different sizes.
Well, that's the reason I threw those numbers out because when they were first done, they were breaking everywhere and then they had to tear out a bunch of it up. Somebody that may have been here remembers that.
I just did ten minutes for it. It was about six inch, five, six inches thick.
Yeah.
It wasn't...
You can tell the ones that bust these, right? These are like that.
I, I'd like to see something in place that the thickness of it is defined.
Here's a, just a fact, right? So, when we buy a second real lot, which is the ones that are affected pretty much, a lot of times the sidewalks are already broke. So, are you going to take that into consideration?
That's why we take pictures. We actually go out, if it's already broke, we take pictures. That way, you don't end up with the contractor paying for something you didn't pay.
Thank you.
You can do that.
And I would also, I'd also like to say too, when it's fixed, that the base that's under that concrete makes a lot of difference too, where, you know, if you've got cocaine and some good stiff base there versus just pouring down on some sand, but...
I'll tell you the heat major, but...
I've actually had calls before, I think about twice in my twenty-seven years, that the sidewalk had blew up in front of somebody's house. The first time I got that call, I thought to myself, what in the world am I going to come? And actually, in hot weather, I guess, in expansion, the sidewalk blew up and actually was standing up two foot off the ground. You couldn't put it back in and it's basically cut it out and poured over. And I guess that's the reason, if you notice a lot of these street ends where the sidewalk stops and you get the pavement, it looks like the pavement is pushed up where the pavement is high, I guess that's some manching in the concrete. I don't know. But I appreciate you, Ms. Eric, for your input and resolving all those issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, Mr. Evans?
Hi.
Fee schedule?
This is the building fee schedule. There's quite a few changes. What we did was we were trying to come in to, trying to be, get our fees a little bit closer to our neighbors or exactly like our neighbors because we're, we're low. We haven't had a change. I can't remember when. I know that we redid this fee schedule when I originally got here. I checked it on a regular basis, but due to inflation, the ICC's calculation rates have gone up and most of the other municipalities have gone up with their fees as well. We have a few other fees that we weren't charging for that we need to add because it's a, it's a hindrance if it don't and we've got one that we need to add because it, we can't comply with the statutory requirements for allowing it without that fee. So, if there's any questions about the, the fee schedule, it's basically a twenty-five percent across the board increase. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, except for we did add two thousand dollars of the sidewalk, of the sidewalk deposit into the fee if you so choose to do so. There is a resolution with this as well. Is that correct?
Yep. Here we go.
Huh?
So, this sidewalk deposit, it's going to be two thousand dollars?
Sidewalk deposit was five hundred. It's going to be two thousand. He's right. It, it, we did, there was a person who decided that it would have been easier to forget it and leave his money. Where's that resolution at?
The page before.
Eighty-eight.
It's, it's page, yeah, it's twenty-three oh six. So, if the board is fine with the two thousand dollars, they would just have to approve it with amending attachment age and include the two thousand dollars, approving a resolution, amending attachment age.
Everybody understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Anyone want to make that motion?
I want one more.
All right.
One more thing. After-hours inspection, I'm, this is the first time I've ever seen this. Is that if available or...
The after-hours inspection?
Is that part of the quest?
It, it's, it's on there, but if we switch to...
He's calling you at the moment.
Huh? We call you all the time.
Anyone want to see? We'll get out of the meeting.
When you get out of the meeting, when you get out of the meeting, he wants you down there.
Not today.
No, yeah, but it's always been on there, after-hours inspection, as far as I know. We've always had an after-hours inspection.
Is there a possibility, is there a possibility for a same-day inspection with the fee?
Well, here's the problem we, we have. If we can do a same-day inspection, we can. The problem is, is that if we don't schedule our inspections, we can't monitor it and we can't handle our time. For instance, if, if I've got meetings or that kind of thing and somebody wants a same-day inspection, but we gave someone the day before one, then everybody's wanting a same-day inspection and it makes it hard for us to, to monitor our time or work within the department.
That makes sense.
I mean, that's acting like there's nobody else. And that's, the intent is, is to help people when we can, but people have a tendency to believe that they're the only ones that's working on the island.
Why don't they have to pay for it? That'd be...
Well, that's right, but, but, and, and that's true. That's true.
They'd discourage it, I think, but...
Well, if, if it's, if it's the same fee as the re-inspection fee, it's not going to discourage them.
No.
They're just going to, and the other thing is, is that you got to be real careful for a service that you provide, whether it be the contractors or just the regular property. If they, the value that they deem that service at, if it ain't, like if you're trying to have a service where we gave same-day service, right? You as, as, as the wards of the town, you're going to try to come up with a reasonable fee. If that fee is so reasonable to him that he decides to start, start calculating it into his cost of construction for doing business with our homeowner, we're going to be going every day for same-day inspections. You, you, so it has to be, and so what happens is, is we get caught in a situation where we can help people and then it becomes a service that we are kicking and choosing. So, it makes it difficult on us to provide the service.
I was really not thinking across the board. I was thinking for one inspection in particular, and that's the open ditch inspection, because a lot of times, we'll put in the water and sewer this morning and by the time you get there tomorrow, after, I don't know, whatever time you get there tomorrow, then just mother nature's already filled half the ditch back in with sand. So, that, that was the only inspection that was, that I was thinking would benefit from that. Just consider if you get time, because that is a problem. That's a, if the wind's blowing, open floor inspection for insulation is another one. You guys have seen it, every one of you go down and there's a pile of insulation across the road and all that type of stuff. That's sometimes not our fault, but...
I, I, I would view it as, if you would put this on here, it's basically you're promising that that's a service that you can deliver.
I agree with that.
Most of the time. And I agree with you. I don't see how a staff of this size can do that.
But we do.
No, no, I'm not saying you don't do, but if you put it on...
I would much rather, if you wanted to, and I think of that the same way, I would, regardless, I would much rather it not be on there and us be able to do things like we have in the past. If we can, we do it.
That's fair.
We've done it. If there's a cloud coming, you know what I mean? And somebody's got a ditch open and they call Tim, this happened, I know Brian's probably done it, they call me and say, if you're coming by, can you inspect this? Because it's getting ready to pour rain.
No, I begged you.
Yeah. So, but, but at the same time, if they call me, you know what I mean, and I have somewhere else I have to be, I can't do it. People need to recognize that we do what we can. But yeah, I would like to see that be offered.
Just, just a general question. Have you just kind of looked at this as with these increases and none of them are huge, but it, it adds up? Approximately, what does this add to the cost of a, a house being built for those who already...
The permit?
Yeah.
It's a twenty-five percent, it's basically a twenty-five percent increase. It's a twenty-five percent increase in the fees and it's basically a twenty-five percent increase. And it's because there is one fee there that is calculated based off fair market value for construction. And that fee actually went up, that is an ICC standard. So, yeah. We, I actually did the numbers randomly. It's roughly that.
It's not twenty-five percent of the, the cost of the house, Pat. It's twenty-five of the permit cost.
No, no, I understand that.
But it, but that fee, see, we use that fee for fair market value against everyone else. And what that does is mean everybody pays at the same rate. So, if you hand me, if you hand me a permit and you claiming that you can build a three-thousand square foot house for ninety-five thousand dollars, we use the calculated fair market value for the fee. If you hand me one that says it's for a half a million, we use the fair market calculated fee. So, the two individuals are paying the permit at the same rate. You see, that's how it works. And it works that way all the way up and down the board. It makes it fair. And at the same time, it keeps someone who's trying to beat up the licensing requirements from being able to play with the numbers and, and that kind of thing and do work with their unlicensed.
Okay.
And then, then there's one more that we're going to get. I would also like to change the one for the temporary CO and add, have a minimum of one fifty and a maximum of two thousand there.
What's the range for?
Okay, the, the reason for that is, is the way the statute's written, it says that as a building official, we may issue a temporary CO and then we may use whatever measures that we deem necessary to ensure for the level of compet, the level of compliance that's required to reach the temporary CO. And the way the county does it is, and the other municipalities is, is that you, when you want a temporary CO now, we go out, we look at it, you get char, we have to come back, we have to do paperwork, so it's an extra inspection. We don't charge for it. And depending on what that house is, at what level, we will decide whether we issue a temporary CO or not. If we decide to issue the temporary CO, then we, we issue you that under the statute and then you have, we give you X amount of days. A lot of times, we let them choose as long as it's not, you know, outrageous. And then we put it in the system. You either have that amount of time to come into compliance and get a regular CO and finish all those things that we identify, right? Or you're going to have to ask for an extension on your temporary CO. So, the way it needs to be done, because what's happening is, is people will ask for temporary CO because of their poor planning or whatever's happened. And so, then we're stuck with all that work we've got to do and all that follow-up we got to do. And if they don't complete it in time, right, then we're starting the process over again. Even, or if we go out and do the inspection in the end. So, now we've added another one. So, the way that statute's written and the way everybody else does it is that from now on, when you give us this fee, when they want a temporary CO, then we will literally issue them an instant permit for a temporary CO with the conditions on it and with the time limit. And when we give them the time limit, or they tell us what time limit they want, if they don't comply with... they don't comply within the time limit, they lose that, the words, they, they're done with that permit, they now have to come get another one and do it again. And so that's the way the county does it. But what we want to do is make sure that if we've got a house that only's missing, they need to redo the sidewalk, got rentals coming, house may be finished, right? So we give them, we would charge them $150, we have a $2,000 deposit, we would charge them $150, issue them a new permit and give them 30 days to fix the sidewalk. Or if we go to a house where they've moved the house and done other things that they're not supposed to do and we have to go back, right? And so they've got some major deficiencies, then we can issue them a temporary CO for 40 days, charge them $1,500. And if they don't comply, do what they need to comply, then they would have to reapply and they would lose that money. And what that'll do is discourage them from, from going for temporary COs every single time, every single time. Because we, right now, I, as a building official, I don't know if anybody knows or not, but I do not have to issue anybody a temporary CO. The law does not require me. It says that I may decide whether or not, depending on the level. And so then it goes on to say that if I do that, then I have to have some means to ensure that they comply. And so that's why I'm saying that this number needs to be between 150 and 2,000. Is what we need to do.
It's very good to implement that. I can, I can go back years and years of sweating bullets. This day and time, another good example is rate locks and interest rates going up. You, you may have a loan you have to close and your tile's not down or something stupid like that, so it's, that's your discretion, obviously, but it's a, it's a really good thing to, to provide to the people that's building and the people that want to live here. Because it, you really are, and you, you get pushed up against a deadline sometimes so bad it just, you wouldn't believe the stress as a builder that it puts on you. So it's, it's well worth the money to me and I'm sure to the customer.
Or you've done all the work, you've got a part that's backordered and can't get it. Can't get it. You're just sitting there with a completed house except for one little thing.
And, and you don't realize it, but there's a lot of stress on us too. When we issue temporary CO, we're allowing people to go into a home that's unfinished. We're putting our, that's why it's a May, it's not a shout. Because they can't force us to let you stay in a house that may not be in compliance. So we have to take it upon ourselves as certified inspectors to allow that to happen. So there's stress on us as well.
I think we've got a second one.
So if you want the temporary CO extension to be 150 to 1500, to 2,000?
Yeah.
Extension or the certificate?
The temporary CO extension.
150 to 2,000. So two changes to this. There was the sidewalk fee and this.
Madam Clerk, for the record, what changes to this document do you have?
Well, I don't have a motion yet, so, but if...
The proposed motion has two changes, right?
We haven't, she doesn't have a motion.
I don't have a motion, nobody has.
It's a proposed motion. Well, you're thinking about making a motion. I'm trying to get everybody to be on the same page of what that motion may be.
Yeah, that would be to change the temporary CO extension to 150 to 2,000 and to change the sidewalk to $2,000.
Okay, Chair will now entertain a motion.
Is that the only two corrections?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
For State.
All right, just a second.
Second.
All right, now, formal discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. All right, unanimous. You got anything else?
I don't know what is it. That covered the resolution.
Yeah, I think...
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Evans, for you and your staff, what are you doing? All right, we're going to go to number 18, Mr. Hewitt.
Yes, sir. The parking fee increase budget amendment in the amount of $50,908. That's before you this evening. That's recommended and based on an estimate of increased revenues that will result from the implementation of increased parking revenues approved by the board last month. Those have come into effect the 1st of April and it's the estimate on the delta of the increase that we could realistically expect to see above and beyond the current budgeted revenues until the end of the fiscal year through 30 June of '23. So I'm recommending the board adopt that budget amendment, increasing those revenues.
Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion to ordinance 23-6 to raise the revenue for the, this year's parking.
Madam Second?
I second.
Judge Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Number 19, Mr. Evans. You did so well a few minutes ago, we want to hear you again.
I feel like I was just left here last night.
You did.
All right, this is an ordinance amendment, basically a text amendment or an ordinance change. It's to actually clear up two things. It's to clear up actually who enforces this and to also clear up a loophole we had in it for junk, junk vehicles and junk cars. And basically, what we have here is, we have the, the one that we struck out and the one we'd like to change. The one on the top is, is what we would like to see amended. Says, "No junk vehicle, boat, boat trailer or other equipment shall be permitted to be kept in any front, rear or side yard area as defined in chapter 157." And that's the setbacks for, for structures. Zoning code nor junk boat or any waterway within the town limits, no longer than 30 days. So, "Any vehicle, trailer or boat that is in non-conformance at time of adoption shall be removed within 60 days of notification." And basically what it amounted to was the old ordinance covered everything but the backyard. And so you could have as much, you could have junk vehicles in your backyard. The old ordinance also gave a 30-day extension that could be handed out by the police chief. And I, I think I speak for him as a regulator, if somebody has to enforce a rule, that's the craziest thing in the world. I mean, if you got a rule, you got a rule. Being able to give an extension is just opening a door. Because basically what happens is, is that, and, and what that does is it takes him out of the picture, it puts code enforcement in the picture. So now we're taking the complaint, we're issuing the, the violation. The violation then goes out and then they'll have 30 days to comply, or then the penalties will start being assessed over in the area. So that, it pretty much clears it up because before, we didn't know which one of us was supposed to be enforcing it. And we also realized that we had a loophole in it, that you could take your, actually, we've got, we, actually, we have had situations where I've sent letters to cars in the front yard and guess where they ended up? In the backyard. So that, because it's obvious that...
Is there a definition or criteria for what is a junk vehicle or junk boat? How you judge that?
Well, I, I don't know. I'm trying to, I'm thinking of that, the, the trial with Earl Flynn, where the, where the judge said he didn't know, know what, how to define pornography, the new one in the state.
It's, it's a call.
Yeah, well, it's a call, but at the same time, i, i, if it's not got, if it's not been registered like it says in here and it doesn't have the proper stickers on it, then we could declare it a junk vehicle or abandoned or whatever it is. And that's how we usually tell. If it's, if it's in that position and it, the tags are two years dead and the inspection sticker's not on it or gone, then we can either declare it, we, we can basically declare it a junk vehicle. I mean, I, the, there, there's really no other way to, to do it other than, or if it's so rusty and, you know, it's been underwater a half a dozen times, there's a good chance it's probably junk.
How about unlicensed? How about unlicensed?
That's what I just said. If the tags are missing or if they're dead.
It can be a 2023 car sitting there.
Yeah, that's right. But, but still, if, if it's, if it's junk, I mean, you take, somebody can wreck a brand-new car and pull it in the backyard. Neighbor shouldn't have to look at that.
And that definition is in the code.
Yeah, it is. It's, it's in.
Okay, Commissioners, what are you going to do? Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve. When I first read it, I thought, no junk vehicle, then I saw a boat. I wanted to make sure that it's not just anybody's boat, but, so it is junk boat, junk trailer, junk, junk, junk.
Yeah. And, and of course, you end up with a boat now in the marsh or something, there's a good chance we're not going to get to it first. They've got, the state's got rules in place now after the hurricanes and stuff. Boat, boat ain't going to last long out there doing any kind of environmental damage. The CAMA's got rules on it now and so does Wildlife, Resource Commission and U.S. Fish and Wildlife. Because y'all remember, there was a bunch of boats left everywhere last night.
Looking for a second.
Second.
All right, Doctor Second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, approval. Chief Dixon.
Yeah, great. Good, good. Sorry I had to sneak in late. We've been training all day today. Jumping right into the police reports. Really, the biggest shock value from the February report was the number of parking violations that we saw an increase in. So we, with the shelling that's going on, it's a real hot area down there in 800 Block and officers have been staying on top of that, trying to keep a lot of that regulated. So.
They were out there today.
Out there again today? Yes. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of that going on. With the, with that in mind, with the parking, I wanted to give a little public service announcement to remind everybody that paid parking comes into effect April 1st. And some of that may have been mentioned earlier in the meeting, I don't know, but wanted to throw that out there. 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So, as far as what we're doing in the police department, we're still working on our in-service training. We've got our firearms qualifications coming up. We're already getting prepared for days at the docks. It's hard to believe we're already halfway through March and the big festival is the end of next month, so it'll be here before we know it. That's, that's really what we got going on at the police department. If you've got any questions or comments on the police report, I'll answer them if I can. Perfect. Well, then, I'm going to move on to a second part here. Because I'm excited about this one. Officer Wade, could you, could you step up here with me? I don't like standing up here by myself, I'm going to bring some company up here with me. Officer Elise Wade has worked with us for two years now? Almost two years now. She has been a valuable asset to our department. And recently, she just completed her traffic investigation and enforcement certificate program. So this is a program through the North Carolina Justice Academy. It's one of six. It requires 400 hours of classroom training hours in each specific topic area. So she has spent the last six years, 400 hours in the classroom studying nothing but traffic enforcement. It's covered areas from DWI detection to aggressive driving enforcement, crash investigations, the whole, if it's got to do with a vehicle and traffic and crashes, she studied it. So they have sent me an I certificate, which I would like to present to her at night. I just can't tell you how proud of her I am.
Chief, stand over here and get a lovely picture. Half of it will be lovely, the rest of it is you.
The rest is the chief.
Husband, 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 you want somebody to take your camera and take a picture for you?
Heather's there.
Heather's got it? Okay.
Perfect. Thank you guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well deserved.
Amen.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we ready to go to number 20? Have I skipped over anything or forgotten anything? Everybody happy at this point? All right. Public comments, about anything anybody wants to talk about, if you raise your hand and be recognized. Anyone want to speak about anything? Good, if you've got something good, you can say that too. Okay, seeing no one, Town Manager's report, Mr. Hewitt.
Yes, sir. Pleased to announce that budget season is underway. Last night, we held the first of three scheduled budget workshops where the board reviewed and established their goals for the upcoming year along with discussion on some of the preliminary drafts of the staff budgets that were set forth. Wanted to put out there for everybody that the next budget workshop is scheduled for the 20th of April and that is in the evening. Correct? At 5:30. So if, would encourage everyone to attend if possible. A particular item of interest, wanted to let everybody know that we have several state and federal appropriation and legislative requests that have been set forth. We formally requested and we're not shy in asking for several direct appropriation, funding, and also some specific legislative actions for the town at both the state and federal levels. For instance, we've asked for appropriations, direct appropriations for the pier, sand, inlet maintenance, canal dredging and spoil areas, a second water tower along with specific prohibitions regarding shark tournaments and also the inlet hazard area expansion. We are engaged with the town's advocates and representatives to attempt to dovetail those efforts with our budget season. Hopefully, we can offset some of the expenses, our congressional and general assembly sessions. For the hurricane damages repair project, we got some good news yesterday, that FEMA has finally issued a congressional notification for the wrap-up of the town's hurricane repairs. And it appears pretty strongly that the town's remaining outstanding $600,000 in reimbursement should arrive within the next six weeks or so. We already touched on the inlet hazard area proposal, but I wanted to point out that the next CRC meeting is in Manio on the 26th and 27th of April. And those are normally broadcast, but even though it's all the way up in Manio, we will have presence there, sharing our opinions on the inlet hazard area specifically and any other item of importance that would affect the town. Lastly, on a, a real positive note, it's hard to believe that Easter Sunday is, is four weekends away. I want to put a plug in for the assistant town managers. The nighttime egg hunt is Friday, April the 7th. The important thing is that you have to pre-register and that registration ends this Friday, the 17th of March. And that's all I have.
Anybody have any questions of Mr. Hewitt? Okay, I'm going to try to make mine brief. Now, the next few weeks are going to be unusually busy for me. I've got a hurricane conference meeting to attend, that's a national thing. I got Brunswick County's hurricane emergency program that'll be coming up. Got two events in Raleigh I've got to go to. I've got to go to Washington DC and a shoreline protection meeting tomorrow and some other smaller, less urgent meetings, but still have to go, as, as well as highway meetings and so forth. So the next five weeks are going to be very busy for me. But the good news is, our assistant town manager has lined up a good set of bands and entertainment. And the first concert this year is Quinn.
Memorial Day music band, I think that's on the 8th and at 6:00.
Okay, and you have that list of bands and dates on our website?
Yes, sir.
And look forward to everybody being there and kicking up your heels. I know several people have expressed what a wonderful job you've done and the bands you've got lined up. And from what I'm hearing from the vacation rental agencies, rentals are looking good for... And from what I'm hearing from the vacation rental agencies, rentals are looking good for this year. And so I don't have anything bad to say, but I would like to say one thing about this inlet hazard area. For those of us that have been around a while, Holden Beach West, I just cannot understand why they, the powers that be feel so threatened on the west end of the beach, because it wasn't that many decades ago that the ocean was up to another set of dunes where the dunes were pushed up after hurricane haze, when some of those original dunes are still in place. All that sand out south of that is newly developed in the last few decades, and I don't understand why it has grown that much, and yet Holden Beach West is being penalized the way it is. I just don't understand that. But I'm sure they know what they're doing, or they're convinced that they know what they're doing. But anyway, without talking too much, Mr. Mayor, pro temp, what do you have?
It's just very little also, Mr. Mayor. I just again would like to congratulate Elise for spending all that time, getting all the education she needs to help to be a better police officer. She, I think she's a great police officer now, and I hope that we'll be able to retain her with all these new credentials, so congratulations to Elise for that. We've got, we're looking forward hopefully to warmer weather, and with that warmer weather will come more people to visit our island as we approach the summer season. I just want for everybody to be mindful that golf carts will be coming out soon, and you know, that's one of my concerns. Please be mindful of them, and I hope our enforcement of some of the issues that we have will start early so we can kind of stop it before it gets too far along. As was mentioned by the Chief, we are starting the paid parking April first, and if people keep coming to look for seashells like they are, we should have a booming April. The only negative thing I have is that I'm sorry, I really, it's a shame we had to put off the progress on the pier another month. Every month is a month that we don't have it completed. Other than that, I hope everybody has a good rest of the month, and hope we have warmer weather soon.
Mr. Murdock?
I again want to thank everybody for coming out that's here with us tonight and the ones that are listening. Thanks to the staff again for all your hard work, especially on some of these ordinance changes. Just a point of interest, I attended Lockwood-Foley Inlet meeting last week, and for those of you that are interested in having access to that big mother ocean out there, Lockwood-Foley Inlet is a constant problem, it seems like, and it's a constant battle for who's gonna dredge it, who's gonna get the sand, how are we gonna pay for it, and it sounds like it's gonna be a while this time before we see a dredge. I think the Army Corps of Engineers has a dredge down in repair, so there's short one dredge, and that limits their manpower, but from, the good news is, they're planning to get us one. I believe, if I'm not misquoting them, as soon as it leaves Carolina Beach, and that's probably in two or three months from now, which hopefully will be in time for the major boating action out there. But right now, it's shallow, so if you try to get out Lockwood-Foley, the buoys aren't in place where they should be, and you need to exercise extreme caution to get out. But you can bend the ear of anybody that'll listen, if you're an avid boater, to state the importance of that inlet to this community, as well as Oak Island or anybody around in this area. Just talk to your politicians when you get a chance, and your board members and such, so. We need all the help we can get to keep that highway to the ocean open, so to speak. I'm not gonna talk about the weather again, because last month, trees and flowers were coming up, and this month, you gotta cover them up, so I'm gonna leave that alone. But wish everyone a happy Easter, and hopefully, warm weather's right around the corner.
Doctor?
I want to thank everyone for coming out and the staff for doing all their work. Tim and Chris had a lot of work with all the ordinances and the changes, and Christie working on the permits. The staff's working hard, I appreciate that. I want to reiterate what Brian's saying about Lockwood-Foley Inlet. Once that's gone, it's gone. We need to keep working on that, trying to get that taken care of. I also want to clarify, on seven ninety-six, I'm not against that house and becoming better-looking by any means. My concern is, I think we need to move forward with, at least part of the project that we talked about with the bathrooms. That is a handicapped accessible access, we need handicapped accessible bathrooms. People have been parking there every day, all off-season. There's no porta potty in the off-season. If those people are down there four and five hours looking for shells, they're going to the bathroom somewhere. And people's houses down there are constantly getting invaded with people going in the showers, people under people's houses, people trespassing on property. And I think we really need to push, I want the house to look better, but I don't want to put a lot of money into something that's just a cover-up. I think we need to move forward with doing something more positive down there that's gonna be useful to the community and the people down there. Everybody have a happy Easter, stay safe.
Ms. Pat?
I want to announce that this is my last meeting as a Commissioner. My husband and I decided last fall that we were gonna move back inland in the near term. In January, we accelerated the process, we have a house going up that's gonna be ready in July. I originally planned to continue serving until the new house was ready to move into, but over the last several weeks, I've rethought the plan. Although I enjoy working with most of the town's staff, and I would particularly like to call out public works in the police department, their responsiveness and hard work is exceptional. But I'm unwilling to continue working in the environment created by town hall leadership. They're supposed to work at the pleasure of the board. It's never been my pleasure to have to deal with lack of transparency, evasion of responsibility, selective application of policies and enforcement, and inadequate planning and project management. It's unnecessarily difficult and time-consuming to accomplish things for Holden Beach. To the board, it's become clear in the last couple of months, we're not on the same page when it comes to who and how we choose to tackle the challenges ahead. There are difficult decisions the board has to make in the upcoming season, and particularly what to prioritize and how to fund the priorities. I really believe these types of decisions should be made by individuals with a long-term vested interest in Holden Beach. Since I'm no longer in that category, I will go to the county government complex and resign by the end of this week. To the residents who voted for me, and particularly the ones who've spent considerable time sending me information, advice, and constructive criticism to help me make decisions, thank you. To everyone, I hope you have a carefree, fun-filled summer. I'm planning to, thank you. I would ask to be excused from attending the executive session. I don't believe that I need to be involved, and that I'm relieved from any responsibility of voting, so if there is a vote, it's necessary. I'm not automatically reported as a yes.
This is quite a shock, I don't know about the rest of you.
I would have dropped a bomb.
Madam Clerk, I would have to read up on the rules. I know the rules, when an elected official leaves the room, the meeting continues, and the votes that are taken are recorded as a yes vote in the absence of that person.
Unless the board excuses.
Unless the board excuses them. So, and she also stated that she's gonna go to the county to resign. I don't know if that's necessary or not. To my knowledge, it hasn't been done in the past.
You would, no, it's not, but they, I mean, you notify them because of your term, you have a long-term to fill.
Whatever the procedure is, and I assume, I think Woody went to the county himself.
He might have, but technically, you were just resigned with us, and I mean, I connect the board of elections, but.
Well, that's fine, if you would do that on my behalf, but I'm officially resigning.
All right, well, I feel like I have to say that in behalf of the town's citizens, the property owners, the staff, and those of us elected officials appreciate all the hard work you've done. I know you've put a lot of time and effort in it, and you are appreciated, whether you feel like you are or not. And we all thank you. With our objection from me, the Commissioners, I would suggest that we grant her wish as she outlined.
Not that anything will come to a vote, but just in case.
Okay.
Absolutely.
But we appreciate you. All right, you are very valuable member to this community, Pat, this is awful.
Again, I didn't, we didn't reach the decision to leave the island lightly, there's a lot of reasons for it. But again, I think it's best decisions get made this coming budget season by people with long-term vested interest here.
Okay, thank you very much. Wow. Judge, you got next?
No.
Well, I'm just in a shock here.
I'm sitting here in shock myself, Mr. Mayor.
But anyway, Madam Clerk, will you read the verbiage to go in closed session?
Closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one four three three one eight eleven A three Consultive Attorney.
Is the motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
All in favor say aye. We're back in regular session. Any further business?
I think we've cleared everything, I think it's time to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Looking for a second. All in favor say aye.